So we are reconvening in open session. Item five on the agenda is public comment period, and I believe we have a citizen wishing to speak about a certain matter. Mr. Morrison, speak to the Electric Utility Board concerning charitable giving of LPNL, specifically as such charitable giving pertains to electric service. Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you just a little bit about something that's really important to me, and I think because you all are sitting on this board, it's really important to you, and that's public service and helping our citizens and helping this community to be a better community. My name is Frank Morrison. I live at 3606-105th Street. I'm the president of the Coronado Project. We live over in the Chapman Hill neighborhood. It's just north of the 1-9 Park, excuse me, South, back in that neighborhood. In 2013, I bought some pretty deteriorated apartments over there, and our objective is to provide housing and services to our lowest-income citizens. We've been working on this and doing this. We are being very successful. I'm asking for your help today. I know that you do, through the community, do great charitable work. There are quite a few of my residents, I believe we have 25 apartments, that we consider all bills paid. All of our apartments are individually metered, but because some of our residents are, pardon my, dysfunctional family I describe them as, have a history where they either were negligent themselves, or they lived with a relative or a friend who took advantage of their relationship, their situation, and put them in a negative situation with LPNL. And so we are paying their utility bills, and not just LPNL. Many of them have the same situation with Atlas also. But I'm here to ask, and I believe you received a letter that I wrote and a copy of a paper I called "The Coronado Project," which is a description of some of what we're doing and a lot of what we dream of doing and are moving toward. My apartment manager right now, and this is not connected with this, but to give you an example of our situation, my apartment manager, her title is Family Support Specialist. She knows what's going on with everybody in the complex. She is babysitting. She's carrying a little two-year-old baby around in her car with her, doing her job as best she can. Because one of our residents just got a job she started yesterday, but because of the way our social system works, she can't get daycare until she gets a job, and most times you can't get a job until you've got daycare to take care of your kids. That's just an example of some of the stuff we have to deal with. The Coronado Project is a very unique animal. Nobody else, certainly nobody else in Lubbock, I know the Carpenter's Church is building, working on developing a similar kind of facility operation where they're taking chronically homeless, putting them in a facility across the country. It's called Housing First. Where we are unique is that we don't just put them in a house, we require them to participate and work toward growth. If they don't have a job, we're going to help them get a job, and we expect them to keep the job, and then move to work paying their rent. LPNL sells electricity, and I'm really not expecting you to give it away, but we're helping the lowest-income people. I don't think we have a resident who makes over $15,000 a year. There was a time where I couldn't pay my bills if I didn't make $15,000 a month, and they're living on this. Some of our residents come from anywhere, from apartments where they're paying anything from $450 up to $550 or $600 a month. They're trying to buy a car, they're trying to pay insurance on that car, if they're paying for child support, childcare. Some of the guys are paying child support. There's not much left for food and utilities. I would just like to encourage you, as members of the board, to encourage your staff to look more strongly and more diligently at how you can help organizations like the Coronado Project and other organizations out there who focus on helping the least of our neighbors to be able to get out of the hole that, as I said, in some cases they put themselves in, in some cases... You know, if I asked any one of you, I don't think there's any M.D.s on the board, if I asked any of you to go into the operating room, my wife just had a hip replacement yesterday. Said, "I need you to go in there and replace that hip." You'd say, "I don't have a clue." There are some people in our community who, when you say, "I need you to get a job and keep it," don't have a clue. And we're helping them, and we're being real successful. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I believe that since it was posted on the agenda, you can ask me some questions if you'd like, and otherwise, I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Well, we appreciate your coming. We take very seriously our responsibility to the entire community in Lubbock. We do appreciate your keen attention to this.
Thank you very much, and I'll be available anytime to answer any questions or visit with you more about this. I just, as I have chosen this as my life's mission, helping our neighbors to be more productive citizens and return to some degree of self-sufficiency or self-sustainability is what we're committed to doing. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
All right, let's go to item six, discuss and take action regarding a resolution accepted in the Lubbock Iron Light Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ending September 30 of 2015. Mr. Virchell, I'll ask you to kick that off.
Yes, so we've distributed our copy to each one of you, which is the document that we'll be discussing today, and it will also be posted online after approval. Just to start off with, we do believe that all the data that's in this document is accurate in all material respects and is presented in a manner fairly. This fairly sets forth the financial position and results of Lubbock Iron Light. We also believe that all disclosures necessary to enable the reader to gain an understanding of LPNL's financial affairs have been included. The financial statements have been audited by BKD, LLP, its permanent license certified public accounts. David Coleman is here today. He was a partner with BKD, and he was in charge of this audit. So I was going to turn it over to him right now for his overview of the audit process this year, and then following that, Chad Sales will give a little bit more of a detailed look at some of the financial highlights for the year, for your information.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Andy. We were able to issue a clean, unmodified opinion on your financial statements. The opinion was dated on February 12th, and that's significant because that's three days before the city's caper was issued. So I just wanted to throw that in there. In the past 10 years that I've been here, we, LPNL, you all beat the city. Not by much, but they did get their financial statements, or you did get your opinion before they did. We don't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report to you. There's nothing really internal control related in the management letter that we need to report to you. The staff, the staff that we work with, Theresa, Chad, and Andy do an awesome job, did a great job on this audit in particular in preparing our documentation that we request from them, and also preparing the annual financial report that Chad is about to go over with you. I will add that this document is prepared by the staff here, so the only real, I have input, I review it, and I give them my opinion on things that we need to tweak, but it is their document. They do a great job of preparing that for you. So I will add, in our opinion, you'll see an emphasis of a matter that's related to GASB 68. GASB 68 is the new pension standards. I'm going to let Chad talk about, go over that in his presentation on the annual financial report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that after he's finished, so.
Mr. Campbell, I would ask you one question. When writing the financial statements, it takes a, would you agree with me that it takes a higher level of competence and ability for a city or an department of the city to write their own financial statements?
Yes, most definitely. I mean, we're, one of our goals as auditors is trying to get management to take responsibility for their financial statements. And so when you have a staff that's willing and able to do that without a lot of guidance, it shows their professionalism and their ability to get that done. Not all of our clerks do that, so we have a few that do, but more than not, they don't prepare their own financial statements like your staff does.
So I won't put words in your mouth, but what I would like to say is that, and we believe your staff is a cut above the...
Most definitely, yes.
Most definitely, yes.
Great to work with.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Campbell?
All right.
Any more questions to approve it?
I think, I think we have... I was going to go through it.
I'll get after it.
All right. All right, so just kind of give you a rough table of contents on some of the important pages. Page three is the independent auditor's report, and that's just the letter that Mr. Coleman referenced. Page five is management's discussion and analysis. That's basically management's take on what happened throughout the fiscal year through the eyes of management. Page 21, you'll find the actual financial statements. Page 25, you'll find the notes to the basic financial statement. And then page 49 is the required supplementary information. So, not that you can read that, but that is the actual BKD letter, and that is included in the audit. I'm just going to go over a couple of the financial highlights. I'm not going to read this to you. You guys can all read. That is really kind of the most relevant portion of the auditor's letter. Basically everything that David just said out loud is what he's written there. So can you guys still hear me? Sorry. All right, one of the big things that we go over each month is purchased power. If you'll recall, at the end of last fiscal year, we were under-collected by about $4.9 million, and that was related to the metering issue that we had with Xcel Energy at Dowd Substation. At the end of fiscal year 2014-15, we were over-collected by $2.2 million. Since we hadn't earned that revenue, we recognized that over-collection as an account payable on the balance sheet and then reduced our revenues accordingly. Just to give you a reminder, this is a graph that you're all very familiar with, and I've just broken it down into the two fiscal years. You can see fiscal year 13-14, when it goes into the red, you can see exactly when the Dowd issue happened. That red arrow is where we ended the fiscal year, and then at the end of this fiscal year, we ended up $2.2 million over-clip. On page six, we talk in the MDNA about the base rate adjustment. And as you're all very well aware, for the second consecutive year, the board and the council approved a 5.75 percent base rate adjustment. And, you know, in our budget process, we work through our financial model and look at our long-term capital needs, and that adjustment is what was called for, and so you can see that show up in the financials. Page seven, the unit contingent and power marketing. As you're aware, in August of 2014, two of our unit contingent agreements expired, and you know, we didn't see a lot of impact on the financials in 13-14 since we only got a month left in the fiscal year. But we really saw the impact this year in terms of the revenues, and that was for the Brandon and Massingle units. And so what we did, knowing that that contract had expired, we hired a power marketing company to market Brandon and Massingle into the SVP integrated marketplace. You know, we saw $10.8 million in revenue in 13-14 related to the unit contingent contracts, and 14-15, we saw $1.7 million from the unit contingent contracts, and that was supplemented a little, about $1.5 million from the power marketing activities. The biggest driver there is we were receiving capacity payments regardless of whether energy was used, and those went away. And to make it worse, we actually have to start, we have to pay for gas, and now we're under the unit contingent contracts we did. So it just brings those margins down. So we went from $10.8 to about $3.2 million from revenue from our plants, and so that was a big driver in the reduction of our revenue. Capital program, we funded 17 new capital projects and 14 existing projects funding a little over $32 million. Capital program was funded 36.2 percent equity and 64 percent debt. Our target funding each year is 35-65 when, those two components. Also, in the fiscal year 14-15, we closed 20 capital projects valued at a little over $21 million. In terms of debt, on page eight, we issued almost $12 million revenue bonds to fund our 14-15 capital program and had a true interest cost of 3.31 percent. The city also issued advanced refunding bonds, and our portion of that was about $13 million, resulting in almost 9 percent savings, with the true interest cost being about 2.36 percent. And then here is the biggest change that we saw on our financials this year. Mr. Coleman touched on it briefly. It's GASB 68, and it's how we account for and how we report on our pensions. And so you guys will recall that we put an accrual entry on our financials every month of almost $1.9 million in preparation so there wasn't any shock at the end of the fiscal year. And so this number was projected to be equal to our unfunded accrued actuarial liability based on the market value of our assets. And that NPL was actually about $7 million less than we estimated throughout the fiscal year. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds, we'd be glad to discuss any of it with you after the meeting, but I just want to show you a simple example of how it works at a very high level. So let's just think of this in terms of a mortgage on your house. The way things used to be reported historically was the asset wasn't on your personal balance sheet and the liability wasn't on your balance sheet. The only time that something would show up was if you were behind on your house payment, and say your payment was $500, then you would actually record the liability of $500. So that's the way it used to be. So how did GASB 68 change things? So continuing our mortgage example, it said, you know, "Let's do away with the old way of doing things. What are the assets? Put those on the balance sheet. What are the liabilities?" And so in this example, the liability is greater than the asset. So you would need to make an entry for an expense, which would flow through retained earnings, to affect the equity, to get things in balance. So how did this impact LPNL? So our balance sheet, the pension asset is worth about $98 million. The liability is about $114 million, leaving us with a net pension liability of almost $17 million. So it doesn't work this simply, but through a series of entries and deferred inflows and outflows that we won't get into today, and recognition over time, and we'll come in through layers, when this is all said and done, the expense that will appear is that $16.72 million to balance things out. So I just wanted to show you, this was the estimate that we used throughout the fiscal year. You can see our actuarial accrued liability of about $116 million, with a value of almost $93 million, leaving a difference of about $24 million, with percent funded of about 80 percent. That's what we operated off of all year long because we didn't know how things were going to shake out. This is how things actually shook out. You can see that the liability is about $2 million less, and the value of the assets is almost $5 million higher. So both of those worked in our favor to the tune of almost $7 million, and our liability is about $16.72 million. And so you'll remember that number is the same number that we see here for our net pension liability. And one thing that's very important is we have, our percent funded is about 85 percent. You know, there's a lot of pension plans across the country that aren't nearly as well-managed as ours. We are in the TMRS program, and it's very well-managed, and a few years ago, I think it was maybe five or six years ago, they got a new actuary and put in new assumptions, and it's a 30-year amortization to get the program completely funded. And so we're five or six years into that, and so we will continue to see that number progress upwards, towards 100 percent. The details, if you're really interested, can be found on page 49 in the required supplementary information, and also note eight in your notes on the financial statement. Real quick overview of the revenues, or the income statement, more commonly known. We've already discussed, unit contingent was the big driver in what drove our revenues down. Overall, our operating revenues were down about $6 million. You can see this in detail on page nine of your audit. Our metered revenues are up about $2.5 million, which makes sense based on our base rate adjustment. Uncollectible expense was down about $800,000, and other revenues were down about $100,000. In terms of our operating expenses, they decreased about $9.2 million, and it's due primarily to a couple of line items. Personnel services of about $2.5 million, which was largely driven by two things. One, we ran out of room in some capital budgets in the fiscal year in 13-14, which had some inflated personnel costs. We didn't see those same costs in 14-15, and then we had some severance costs in 13-14 that just weren't there in 14-15. In terms of purchasing fuel and power, we have mentioned all year that the price of purchased power has gone down, and we've seen that, and that's related to the cost of natural gas, which is the biggest driver of our purchased power. The final thing, other services and charges, down about $800,000, and that's largely due to the cool summer that we had. If our plants aren't running, they don't need as much water to cool them, and so we saw some pretty significant savings in terms of water and sewer. That's all I had, just a couple of people that, a couple, about 10 people that wanted to think, obviously this wouldn't be possible without our staff here. Andy leading the way, Theresa is just a great addition to our team. We brought her on in February, and she really carried a lot of the water in terms of putting this together, and so very thankful she's here. Tammy Swat and Felix Orta also helped put a lot together. In terms of the city staff, I'm not going to read all their names, but you can see all the folks there. Linda and Brack being the two that really helped us out a lot and coordinated with us. So that's all I had. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? You entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Conrad, supported by Mr. Eisen. Now, in further discussion, all who are in favor of approving the audit report as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I believe that's unanimous, so it will bring us in to, thank you, Mr. Campbell, appreciate That'll bring us to item seven, update and report by the Director of Electric Utilities or his designated regarding customer service, business center practices, procedures and policies, billing procedures, and the LPNL staff in the form of Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to begin by just, that goes, the strength of our financial team is really, is really important to this organization. I don't know how much y'all appreciate what a great job these guys do, but we have a really good team here, and I'm proud to work with them, and they've done a great job, so just want to start with that. With regard to the report, which starts on page 11 of your packet, we're back in, our power cost is back below the state average, which is a good thing, so we had the fuel cost reduction, which took us back below the state average. Hopefully it'll stay there for long. On page 16, referring to the notes at the bottom here, our call wait time was down for the month of January. That's the third from the top on the left-hand side there, sorry, it was actually the second from the top on the left-hand side. The green curve there shows our call center waiting time, as you can see, it's down pretty significantly. This is below the four-year January average call wait time, so folks have done a good job in that department responding to our calls. We did implement some new water and wastewater rates in January, which is always a challenge to get those in, but we, our folks do a good job of checking and rechecking before we put those rates in the services, so everything rolled out successfully on that. And then just to comment about the project helping, and the contributions went up significantly in January. We think it's partly because of the building and services we put in there promoting that program, and so that was, you see a little spike up, that's the top graph on the left-hand side, but you see the spike up in the contributions. So that was a good thing. On the top of page, on page 19, bottom page actually, we've got 13 new commercial projects this month, and we still continue to have a very active commercial connection of electric customers in Lubbock, which is really points to healthy local economy and keeps our guys plenty busy. Chasing these new commercial customers down and making sure to get service to them. I think that was the only thing I was calling your attention to, but I'm happy to try to answer any other questions that you might have about before.
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That will bring us in to item eight, discuss financial and capital statements, financing options, audits, and financial policy to Lubbock Iron Light related to debt issuance issues, reserve account flows, and cost allocation, revenue suspension projections to Lubbock Iron Light. Mr. Virchell?
All right. First, I'll start again with our normal slide that illustrates where our rates are if you use 1,000 kilowatt-hours of energy per month, where we had been at $194 for the four months of October through January. As David just mentioned a moment ago, the pass-through rate was lower, and you approved that at the last meeting. So you can see the pass-through went from about 6.8 cents to 5.6 cents roughly, or $56 a month for the customer using 1,000 kilowatt-hours. So about an $11 a month reduction there, or about a total reduction on a bill of about 11.6 percent. So I think that's great news. All of that was implemented February 1st, and so those bills have, again, going out at a lower rate. Again, another comparison, as we usually do with the customers in Amarillo, who use Xcel Energy, you can see we are well below where they are. They haven't published their rates for January or February yet, but we anticipate, based on some of the releases that they've put out, that they would be in the $100, $101 range where we are at the $89 range at this point. You saw a portion of this graph a moment ago in Chad's presentation, but this is updated through January, and you can see that we are, at the end of January, we were over-collected about $8.7 million, up from $7.8 million in January. And so obviously, the lowering of the pass-through rate occurred February 1st, so we will start to see that going down, at least we should start seeing that going down as these rates will relieve that and we get back to an even collected status, most likely by the end of September. This month is the first month in a while that you've seen a balance sheet and an income statement in your report. We usually go in hold while the audit is ongoing. We usually go on hold while the audit is ongoing and so wanted to go through this just briefly. You can see in the month of, this is comparing December to just the end of the fiscal year, which we just, which the report that you've just approved, but overall current assets are down about 2.3 million in total. Cash is up about 4.5 million, but receivables are down about 6.7. This is typical. At the end of the summer season, the end of September, usually our receivables are pretty high because of the higher energy costs in the summer months and so we usually see a drop-off in that category around this timeframe. So that is not unusual. The non-current assets, the next section below those three items, in total are down about a million. Our restricted investments are up a little bit. Every month we put back a portion of money to help pay the next upcoming debt service payment, so that will grow up until we make our first payment and then it will kind of be brought down and it grows a little bit. So that, that line item also includes all of our bond proceeds that are outstanding for capital projects. The offset to that $1.3 million increase is related to depreciation on our capital assets. We depreciated about 4.8, $4.8 million of capital and added in new construction about 2.6. So that 2.1 million reduction is a net of the new construction in progress less the depreciation. On the liability side of the balance sheet, you'll see that accounts payable are down. Basically has to do with XL payments, you know, our payments in December are lower than they were in September, so we typically on a normal year see that go down. A new line item that you'll see in your report this month is deferred revenues and this is really a placeholder that will show exactly what our over collection is for our pass-through power. So you can see where we were at the end of the fiscal year at 2.2, where it jumped to 7.8 million, thus the reason for the decrease in those rates, but that'll give you an idea. This keeps us from over-inflating our balance sheet basically because of that cash that has come in that's above what we would keep on a normal inconsistent basis. The only other really significant change I want to point out was on the customer deposits. If you'll recall, November the first, we began, as approved by the board, refunding deposits to those eligible customers. So in November, we had rebated about 1.6 million of deposits. In December, we rebated $135,000 and it'll be around that range, 70, $140,000 range will be a typical amount that we'll refund on a monthly basis. So we refunded about 1.7, 1.8 million. You can see we're only down 1.1 because we have had about $500,000 of new deposits placed for new customers that have come on. So it's a little bit of a churn there over time. The next page is the income statement. What I wanted to show here is our operating revenue. Now I'm comparing the first quarter of this fiscal year to the first quarter of last fiscal year to kind of give you some comparables. So the first quarter of this year, our revenues were down about 2 million from the same time period last year. And you'll notice I've put on here the consumption over the same timeframe. We were down about 43 million kilowatt hours this first quarter compared to the first quarter of last year. So that's about a 7 percent reduction in consumption and the revenues are down about 4 percent. So that looks in line with what we would expect. On the personal services, up very slightly. One, one of the reasons for that though is there were seven pay periods in this first quarter this year compared to six pay periods last year, so one extra pay period in there. Supplies and maintenance are up about a million dollars. The majority of that increase is due to the turbine repair on our gas turbine at Cook, which is about $700,000. We're doing a little bit of research on that. We may end up capitalizing that. It was at fully expense this month, so that may be backed out last, next month and wound back into the capital assets and we'll depreciate that. So we'll, we'll update you that on that next month. Purchase of fuel and power for the quarter is down about 800,000 from where we were the prior year. Again, that's due to, really due to lower consumption for the most part. Gas is still down just a little bit, but I think most of this is related to consumption. And then on really the other area on transfers is up a little bit. Increased transfers to WQPA and some increases in transfers for franchise fees and which, what we'd done was we'd included transfers for franchise fees and piled up based on the total revenues. We didn't back out the over collection of that and so since that's so large, we'll correct for that next month. So really transfers aren't up that much. We'll be having some correcting interest for that going forward, but that's where we ended it, at the end of this month. An update on the capital program. We have 44 open projects. Bonds make up about 38 million of that funding that's still available. Cash is 13 million. So we have about $51 million of bonds and cash available for our capital program right now. You can see for the first quarter, we spent about $3 million, the most of that on distribution, bulk of that in overhead and underground lines being installed. So that kind of gives you an overview there. So that's a real quick update on the financial statements. One other thing I wanted to point out for this month is we are about to issue bonds on behalf of LPNL, the city and LPNL, we'll all together do that in the March timeframe. At the last council meeting, the council approved the notice of intent. We have to publish notice to the community that we're about to issue bonds and we have to do that on four separate occasions within a 30-day period. So that's really all that was approved at the last council meeting. One thing I wanted to point out, we, every year this timeframe, we will go back through the capital program and do a real thorough analysis on the timing of all those events because remember the budget was set back last summer. There are lots of things that have changed at the utilities since last summer. I mean, we've made lots of announcements, the change of our future transmission plans. So, so there's a significant change this year on our capital program. We had originally anticipated issuing a little over $27 million of bonds. Through a new review, we will only need to issue $8 million, about $8.2 million in bonds. Not that those projects have gone away, it's the timing is different, the timing has changed. Obviously going from a transmission loop, which I think originally had been planned, going to a 115 KV loop, outer loop with a 69 KV inner loop has changed some plans and changed some timing. So instead of the 27 million, we anticipate the 8.2. The maximum maturity on those bonds will be 30 years. There are some projects that will be financed over a 10-year period, some over a 20-year period and most of the large transmission projects will be over a 30-year period. So there's three different tranches on, on the bonds that we'll issue. At this point in time, we estimate that the interest rate will be about 3.5 percent on those bonds. What I wanted to show in this graph is what a fabulous time to issue bonds. The yellow line going across the very bottom of that graph illustrates where our interest rates are today. The blue line illustrates where interest rates have been since the late 70s. So you can see at the very, very bottom of that slide, it says that our rates today are lower than they've been 99.8 percent of the time, at least since 1979. So what an amazing time to, if you have to borrow money, today's a great day to do that. This will illustrate some of the changes we made in each of the capital projects while we went from the 27 million down to the 8.2 million. These projects on this slide were originally planned for this year but have been delayed because of our transmission changing, evolving, changing plans. So you can see about 6.2 million will be shifted out for the future year. And then this next slide shows the decreases that we've made. There's some of the, the first several line items there, you see, we have not changed the chock full capacity upgrade, which is a large item, will remain at 4.5 million. The other projects, because of timing, we will just issue enough bonds to cover the design and engineering phases. The construction will begin in the early part of the next fiscal year, so we can delay issuing the bonds till that next fiscal year, even though it is still just a matter of months away where those projects could begin. We felt like it was premature to issue bonds now and not spending for six, eight to nine months. So you can see in total, where in this list of projects, we're at 20.8 million. We've now reduced it to 8.2 million. It's what we are anticipating going out and selling in the markets in, in the March timeframe. What we will do is we will be making presentations to the rating agencies on March the 8th. March the 24th, the council, we would anticipate their approval of the issuance of the bonds. On the 30th of March would be actually when we will negotiate and sell those bonds into the market and then we would receive the funds on April the 21st. So that's kind of the timeline going forward of what we would expect. So I think, yeah, that's the end of my presentation. So if y'all have any questions, I would, we're happy to answer those.
Andy, I just wanted to reinforce a couple of points, I guess, back on the, on the current liabilities on that deferred revenues for the purchase power recovery factor. That will wind up being recognized in the income statement over the next year.
So what we've done with this entry is you basically reduce revenues right now. See, because if we hadn't have done that, our revenues on, for the 44 million would be $7 million greater than that and that's just not really an accurate representation of where we are. And so we will recognize this on the income statement this year, but we're, we're trying to show an accurate statement of where we are today.
But the cash basically is good.
The cash is there, the cash is in the bank and it's just, we will, it's just to prove that we are, the pass-through is working and that we will be rebating those, those over collections back to our customers as soon as we can.
The, the other question I had is on the non-current liabilities, on the pension obligation, since we talked about the ASB 68. Right now we've got the same liability as what we had June, September and I'm just asking for my information. Y'all intend to, to reshoot that quarterly or are you just, you're going to just issue it annually?
No, more than likely it's going to become a year-end entry because it, it depends on what happens in the markets, what happens to the investments at TMRS and the actuary will do a study. What they will, well, actually what they will do is in our next year-end, it will recognize what happened in December 31st of 2014. So it's, it's always going to be about nine months, the information, because the information on the financial statements that you just approved was really for, I'm sorry, December 14. This year will be recognized in what was occurring on December 15th. So I was off the, but, so yeah, so we will wait to get the actuarial results that they will come out with. And we will get those probably in the July timeframe from the actuary. So we would know by the July timeframe about what that entry will look like and so we could actually let y'all know what people look like at that time. We could probably even book it at that point in time if we so desired, but, so that's kind of the timing of that.
Well, I don't, I don't intend to put you on the spot, I'm just curious as to what the, how you, because that, that is a maybe.
You know, it really is all going to depend on investment experience going forward. Now that we've recognized the full liability on our books, now it's just going to be how do those assets change? How do, what's the investment experience? You know, it's been a great year or a bad year in the markets and so it'll be very volatile because the markets are volatile and so, which is kind of, you know, not that exciting to see volatility on the balance sheet, but it, it has kind of incorporated some of that into our balance sheet going forward.
That's, yeah.
But it, but it impacts all cities, all municipalities, all government levels the same way. We're not, we're not any different from anybody else now.
Mr. Mr. Dostoev, refresh my memory, the ASB 68 on the retirement stuff, what was it intended to solve or highlight or what was the purpose of that change?
Well, you know, we had always reported in the very back of the financial statements the, the value of the assets and how much the liabilities we, we have as an organization. It's just never been put on the face of the financial statements. And so now it's really just, and what we do is we put that net liability right now. I mean, you could have an amount of assets on your books, kind of like Chad had illustrated, you know, and liability, it's called a net pension liability and so it's, right now it always shows up on the liability side of the balance sheet. It's not to say it couldn't show up on the asset side, but at some point in the future, the, the investment returns or, or had produced a, a value on the books that were greater than what our future long-term liabilities are going to be, you could actually have an asset sitting on your books. So I, I, it was just to create more clarity. It really, to me, kind of creates a lot of confusion, but it was supposed to be a more apparent recognition of the value of that pension fund on your books rather than at the, you know, third from the last page in a financial statement. Don't know, Greg, do you have a different opinion on that?
Private companies have been putting this on their books now for 25 years, so it's really just a reflection in, in their management standards of something that private companies have been doing for a long time.
There's a little bit different. You'll be determined on a little bit different rules, but that's basically what it is. It's a snapshot at a particular point in time of whether you're overfunded or underfunded in the pension. So, any other questions? Thank you, Andy. Item number nine, report by Board Member Bublin regarding proposed transmission projects and other completed and proposed transmission projects in West Texas and in Mexico.
There's a project in the air. That will not affect us directly as far as our solution for 2019, but in the long run, in the long run though, we may feel the effects of. Tracy Nigga, so the project is in New Mexico, is designed, well, let me put a little bit of background, but first of all, I had to be careful because Troy said he's going to walk out in two minutes. The whole project, he was three minutes. And Greg thought the whole project was, we thought, but it's not. That article that I gave you is in the official publication of Institute of Electronic Engineers, but it's not a National Enquirer type, type document. But if we talk about this several times, that there's a wall between Western grid and Eastern grid, of course, it's one other grid, the ERCOT grid. Electricity cannot be translated from the east and west. The Los Angeles project is designed for repelling. They're going to build a superstation and actually some of the instructions already started on 345 line. They're going to build four of them, one of them's going to ERCOT. And I know that ERCOT had this on their table way before we were running what we're doing. The thing is that if they can build this superstation, they're going to give us a way to market the entire Western grid into this area. That will turn the market system completely upside down. Station 58 squared longer inside. That's 22 square miles. That's right. And it's going to be able to transmit 25, 25 blocks, 20 billion watt of power. You can see it's, it's like a difference of the clock where it allows the power grid wheels to go at different speeds. It seems like to me that this thing will go forth. It's been in the process for eight years and I think that with this, with the emphasis on it, that I think it will go. It won't happen this year or next year, but it will be sometime in the near future. Now change the whole prospect really. America will be under one electric grid and also parts of Canada.
So do you think that's positive or negative?
I think it's positive, huh? It'll open up the market. Right now, you'll see in that article, the cost of a megawatt hour of the Western grid is about $2,300 more than what it is now. So that's the market that they're making. And it just, I just feel like that when I saw, and if you look, the thing is Lovett is on the doorstep of the gateway to this thing. This thing is located just north of Close. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and to let you know that there's something that's, in the long run, probably will affect it from a market standpoint.
So, so the basis is what you're saying is there's no way we can lose.
I don't think so. Well, here's the other thing, why it's probably going to be good for us. Number one, we know that ERCOT is out here and the only thing we have is actually wind generation. They have no load. So looking at it from Lovett's standpoint, we would provide them a basis of load out here that would help stabilize their system and also provide additional reliability. So it's to their advantage to have us in the system because they want to be there at that doorstep. Well, if you've got something that those people want, they favor, we're like the rich uncle that came to visit for the weekend. Everybody's like. Everybody's nice to them. Well, but that's why they'd pay like to get here, for two or more reasons. Number one, they would like to have their presence more solid out here to either open the market up to the west, or if they don't want to do bad, for other reasons, protect their markets that they do have. And we'd be a keystone.
Don, you know, they're talking about the disparity in pricing. If you've got an entire western part of the country paying twenty-three hundred more per megawatt hour in ERCOT here, wouldn't all of our generation?
I anticipate your question there.
You're ahead of me.
Actually, what, I had, I guess I was going to ask you. If we're open the western market to us, not the other way around, we do want the western market to pay that much more.
No, play, we can buy the high-cost power from California and California, Texas could sell the cheap power department. We'd lose.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We'd California buy all of our cheap power.
It's not necessarily true that it was raising our rates in this area, because the market would adjust itself so that we could be selling power to them, not the other way around.
I don't see how we're in ERCOT, we could have a cross-state lines somehow.
Well, here's the thing, though, Charlie.
Because of ERCOT.
They would have no load outside of Texas. They would be selling power. And I think that's no way to do it. ERCOT already has a connection to SBT, that whole company. This other power line would come in to ERCOT in Mexico. I don't know, I don't know if ERCOT would be willing to do that and risk their regulation or not, because the point is, I think that if they don't go outside and actually specifically serve loads, that they can't sell power into the grid.
This thing is.
You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
Well, it's interesting information.
Well, it's just something that I thought, it's, well, you know, I don't know about this kind of stuff, because if you look at that handout, that map shows Lovett, Rock and Navarre. Now, SPS has a big, big play in this thing too, because their border between the east grid and the western grid is quite long. And they're already making plans for somewhere. As a matter of fact, thirty or thirty-five years ago, SPS built one of these stations near Rock and another one in eastern, northeastern Mexico. It wasn't anything near the size of what we're talking about, and the technology at that time is not as good as it is now. So they kind of tell them to not use really, I don't think they're using it anymore. If they are familiar with how to do it. These things are huge, I mean, you can look at, you look like you're on a spaceship Enterprise when you see those things, those storage batteries, which is a quite big, large and complicated process. If they've already started on it, they've been working on this thing over a very year. So anyway, it's just something that is very interesting, maybe because it does involve a load carrier and what they're trying to do, especially the ERCOT.
Appreciate you showing interest.
But if you read that over, I think it has some good information there. And like I say, it's not going to happen now. It may happen ten years from now, but I think it's coming. Because there's always been a big desire to have America on the floor of that particular grid.
That's what ISIS wants to.
Well, that's another story. I shouldn't have said that. Electromagnetic bombs, you know. Anyway, it's just some information I wanted to add.
Well, I think it's very good, it's very good. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Don about that? Thank you. All right, let's go to.
Consider a resolution approving and requesting the city council to amend the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen capital program. To amend capital improvement projects, I, ninety-two, three seventy-three, dispatch control room upgrade remodel. Two, new CIP transmission and distribution EMD center renovations. Three, ninety-two, four, the choker capacity upgrade. Four, ninety-two, three, one ten, transmission loop. And five, new CIP line extension for large commercial customers. I entertain a motion, can we approve this?
Certainly.
Second, all right, now discussion. Andy, you want to just kind of?
I'll, I'll just give you a recap of these. These are budget amendments, there's five capital projects are affected. It's going to be utilizing existing funding, this will not take any new funding, so it does not have any rate impact. The first one is the dispatch control room upgrade and remodel. Originally, this project included both of the dispatch centers, the one at the emergency operations center, as well as the one at the municipal hill. So what we were doing is separating those two projects into two different. So the first one is the one-point-five M. This project was two million sixty-three thousand, so we're reducing it, five hundred thousand. And we'll just fund the primary dispatch control center at the new emergency operations center. The, the, that one, it would be about twenty-four hundred square feet, and so it's about sixteen-point-eight percent of the size of the emergency operations center, and so therefore, we're paying about sixteen-point-eight percent of the cost of that facility. We're also, so that's about one-point-one million, this for the facility itself, and then about a half million dollars of additional funding for equipment and furnishings and software and servers and all that that are required.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Ossman? Andy, on that specific line item, we're approving this pretty far ahead of schedule of when they're going to start, correct?
No, this will be, they're already in design phase, and it should begin construction, I believe, later this year, July timeframe. So it's, I think they'll be able to move in, and I'm not sure how, I think the construction timeframe is like eighteen months, seventeen months. So it's, it's definitely here. We need the funding now for that. The council just approved an amendment to it as well. Did that answer your question? Okay. The, the second one is the backup dispatch control center that has been planned at the municipal hill. One of the things that we've done in this project is we've added about five-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars to that project. Now, that it will include some modifications to the facility whereby, as you realize, we're having to create a secure area at the municipal hill facility. And so there are some offices, there are some meeting rooms and spaces there that we have to, we basically have to swap in this transition to get into a public space and getting other offices into the secure space. So that's a little bit of additional there. We've also been required to add fire suppression throughout that facility related to this remodel. In addition to this, not really funded through this capital project, are repairs to the storm damages that occurred in June of two thousand and thirteen. That's about three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars of repairs that will be funded by the risk fund of the city. And also, the city is funding about ninety thousand dollars of common area cost in this facility. That's not a full share of their cost in the common space, however, they did pay about four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars to re-roof that facility, and LPNL wasn't on the hook for any of that. About two-thirds of that facility is related to LPNL. So if you, if you take that into consideration, that actually paid really probably more than a fair share of the cost related to the construction that's going on out there. So those will get, those projects in place will take care of both of the primary and backup control centers. The other projects we have, we have a new project for a large commercial extension to serve infrastructure in the northern part of our service territory. You can see on there how much that's adding, eleven thousand seven hundred feet of feeder lines, sixty-eight hundred of new lines, transformers, sectionalizers, those sorts of things. So it's a million-dollar project. Choker capacity upgrade was originally a four-and-a-half million dollar project. It's now an eleven-point-two million dollar project. The majority of that increase is related to increasing that from the sixty-nine KV to one-hundred-and-fifteen KV. We'll be taking money from the transmission loop project, which is listed right below that, to fund the majority of that, or fund all of that project. We're going to be reducing the transmission loop project down to what has been spent out of that project, and we'll be closing that project, because really going forward, since we're not doing a major transmission loop, we're going to be doing the outer and inner transmission loops. Those will be funded in the schemes projects, kind of like choker, like, by substation, by substation. So you'll start seeing those projects layer in at different locations rather than one big project per transmission loop. Much easier to track, much easier to keep a handle on. What I wanted to show is kind of where the funding is all working here, and this, this top line shows the current value of each of these projects today, before the, before the amendment. We do have about two-point-nine million dollars of unspent bond proceeds. These are bond proceeds related to capital projects that came in under budget or were canceled for some reason, or something of that magnitude. So we have that to reallocate. So first what we did was we took that two-point-nine million dollars, so we deducted it out of that first column, and we spread it to the different projects. That two-point-eight million is made up of several different bond issues, an oh-nine issue, thirteen issue, and fourteen issue. And so we took those and spread those to each of those projects. So that took care of the unspent bond proceeds. The next thing we did was the transmission loop, the fifth column over, you'll see, we took out the funding that's currently there, we had about five-point-seven million there. We've taken that out and we've put that in the choker project. So that basically gets the choker fully funded. The transmission loop is brought down to basically where the current expenses are, also funds large commercial extensions. And then finally, we had series two thousand and fifteen, we just, we just moved the funding from the dispatch EOC to the dispatch at the municipal hill facility. So once you make those three series of changes, we've transitioned all the existing funding that we have on hand into these new projects. So I think, hopefully, that, a little bit complicated, but hopefully, that kind of illustrates how we shifted the funding around to fund the projects and without needing to go out and issue additional bonds. So that's basically a recap of that item that you had before you right now for your consideration.
And that does, that does require the budget.
Yes, it's a budget, and we will be taking it to the council, upon your approval, at their two meetings in March. So it wouldn't officially be approved until the end of March timeframe, that's the one.
Mr. Ken?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could ask for a motion to approve, to be amended on the fifth CIP, the name of the line extension for large commercial customers, second.
So I need to entertain a motion to amend the, Mr. Ossman, would you like your motion to be repealed? Two seconds of that. All right, you've heard the motion, and second, and discussion, and further discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Item eleven, consider resolution authorizing the director of local utilities to execute a letter agreeing with binding between the city of Lovett, acting binding through Lovett firing line and Gilco Carter regarding Texas state regulatory legislative services related to LPNL's integration into ERCOT. Item twelve, is consider resolution authorizing the director of local utilities to execute engagement letter binding between the city of Lovett, acting binding through Lovett firing line, Lloyd Gosling, Clochell, and Towns in PC related to ERCOT integration. Motion to approve. Second by Mr. Conrad, all who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will bring us into close of our agenda.
Mr. Bubba? There was one thing I forgot to have, a handout that I gave you. The last page of the map, projects underway, fold, many, the X and energy panel. I just included that in there just to, there is a lot of that here.
Thank you. Mr. Ken, is there anything else? All right, then we will stand and adjourn.